Good evening, welcome to the December 5th session of Bellingham City Council. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. If you could all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call. April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jane Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Lillquist. Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Teri Bornamond.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into our public comment period. Do we have a sign up list? Okay, so any of you who are new to our public comment process, just to let you know, you have three minutes to speak. Our clock is right here and you'll hear a little bell at two and a half minutes and that'll let you know that you've got 30 seconds to wrap it up. And I will do my best in pronouncing your names, but please forgive my pronunciation. And if you could just state your name for the record, we don't need your address, just please state your name when you start speaking so that we have that for official record. And first, oh yeah. And then the other thing is, is we want to make sure we provide a very safe environment. So regardless, we respect everyone's opinion when they are speaking for their three minutes, so no clapping, no jeering, or booing. We just want to support a safe environment for everyone to have an opportunity to say what they need to say. Okay, so I will read out the first couple of names and if you could line up over here to get ready. Our first names are Olga Prado, Leslie, or is it, no, sorry, I think that's Jose Carnillo, and Vicky McCoy, and Hope Jose Day are the first four names that I have. And come on up and make that microphone to your own height.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Hi, everyone. My name's Olga Prado and I am the Vice President of Blue Group. Last time we met, my peers and I came to you advocating for Bellingham to become a sanctuary city in order to provide comfort and help ensure like safety of our undocumented immigrant and mixed family communities post-election. Since then, the Blue Group has begun seeking support and creating plans of action and protection. Post-election, we sent out a mass email to our faculty and staff from which we've received a large amount of support for our actions and for our petitions for Western to become a sanctuary campus as well. In one of our faculty petitions, we received over 200 signatures. Different spaces on campus such as academic departments, offices, and centers have also openly declared themselves sanctuary spaces. In addition, we've held a silent protest on campus sharing parts of our stories and received a great deal of support and love from our WWU community. And then within our Bellingham community, we have begun gathering with local organizations and lawyers and a variety of supporters, from which also a local coalition is being formed to help ensure the right and safety of our undocumented and marginalized communities.
Hi, my name is Jose Carrillo and I am here to advocate for the undocumented community we have here in Bellingham on behalf of Western's Blue Group. At the last council meeting, you heard some of the concerns and wishes coming from undocumented community. And however, there were also a few people who voiced opposition to making Bellingham a sanctuary city. I believe these people have good intentions. They want to help the undocumented community, but also have concerns regarding the well-being of our community and our city. However, many of these concerns are represented up here were partially or just blatantly false. These false concerns range from economic concerns, safety concerns, as well as concerns regarding documented immigrants taking advantage of the system. Undocumented immigrants contribute to the economy by working jobs that other people would not work, as well as through paying taxes through the individual taxpayer identification number, also known as ITIN number. Studies after studies have shown that the United States economy would experience severe deficits if the undocumented population were to be taken away. In terms of the safety of our city, criminals make up only a small minority of the undocumented population. We ask you to make a sanctuary city for the hardworking undocumented immigrants who work alongside us and have the same values as us. Somebody came up here and asked, why don't you just become legal? For most undocumented immigrants, this is just simply not an option. There's no path to residency or citizenship. It is not in our best interest to be undocumented. Many of us pay taxes and don't qualify for federal benefits. It's not a matter of whether we want to become citizens or not, but simply that there are not laws in place that allow us to do so. Lastly, I want to address concerns regarding making Bellingham a sanctuary city in terms of government funding. A federal law called 8 U.S.C., paragraph 1373 states the guidelines regarding city cooperation and federal funding from the Department of Justice. Unless the city or the county specifically restricts communication between local government agencies and the Department of Homeland Security regarding immigration status or citizenship status, it is not in violation of this law. Therefore, nonparticipation in active deportation is a valid choice that does not violate this law or jeopardize Department of Justice funding for the city. Few, if any, so-called sanctuary policies that have been brought up by other cities who have come out of sanctuaries are actually in conflict with this statute. I hope I've been able to address some of the concerns regarding making Bellingham a sanctuary city, and I hope that Bellingham decides to join other cities in doing the right thing. We will be in touch with the council in the near future in order to address exactly what Bellingham can do to make it a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Victoria Matei. I usually hear her pronouns and I have lived in the United States for 20 years. In my time in Bellingham, Washington, I have served Watcom Community College as a program coordinator and AS Vice President. I have been on the Watcom Peace and Justice Center Board for over a year now and serve as their secretary. At Western Washington University, I'm the Assistant Coordinator for Clubs and Events in the Ethnic Student Center, and I serve as the President of Blue Group, a club for undocumented students at Western Washington University. I've been undocumented for 20 years. My parents brought my sister and I to the United States in 1996. I was three years old and my sister was six months old. Believe me, I had no idea we were leaving everything behind, our security, our culture, our home, our family, our language, everything. Some people assume many of us came here to steal jobs and that we do not contribute to this community, but I'm here to tell you that this is not true. We came here in search of better lives to educate ourselves, to serve our community, and escape the violence that many of our families experienced. We are members of this community. My father was already in the United States working legally in 1996. At home, it was my mother and my uncle looking after my sister and I. My uncle was stabbed 19 times at work as he was working as a security guard. Within a couple of months, my mom had decided we were joining my father in the United States. We left so quickly, my parents packed very little, didn't sell the house or our cars. They just knew it was in our best interest to leave. I've spent the last three years educating and raising awareness of the undocumented community and have built strong ties to the university and the Bellingham community. And we are here asking for help from our city representatives to take action. Many other members of the Blue Group have similar stories. Families robbed at gunpoint, families tortured, people being threatened, our families weren't left with much of a choice. As you now know, we are also members of the Bellingham community, and as representatives of this community, I believe that you can help us. I believe you care about us as people and that you value our presence here. After the last city council meeting, we received a lot of messages and comments full of hate and ignorance. I do not believe this reflects the Bellingham community nor the city council. As a collective community, we need to educate ourselves before attacking one another and specifically our undocumented community with misconceptions. I'm here to ask you to push for a sanctuary city, sanctuary your campus, and let's push for the protection of the undocumented community outside of what is already implemented. This is a human rights issue and our lives and our safety are more valuable than money. For those who sent us hateful messages, we leave you with this, the last verse of the farmworker prayer. Help us love those who hate us so we can change the world. We will be in touch and hope to schedule one-on-ones with you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Victoria, and Olga, and Jose. So the next, I have Hope Jose Day and James Douglas, and then Annie Wolfe. And just, I'm just going to take a moment here. I've had a question or interest about the fact we have an officer in the room, and I just wanted to address that Officer Almer is here actually to answer questions on the downtown foot beat. So we can take that up later, but just so you know that that's why he's here to answer questions. And we'll continue on with public comment. And you are Hope?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Hope and I'm 13 years old. I'm a student of the Ferndale School District. I've decided to talk today because it is important to me and is important to many others that I know that the safety and security of undocumented citizens is taken as seriously and is given as much privacy so too as documented citizens, both natural born and neutralized. In the area we live, there's a vast Latino population. Some may be documented and some not. It's not anything someone can tell by looking at a person, and nothing weird, unusual, or dangerous at all. Many people migrate to the United States from all over the world looking for wealth, better living, and in many cases, safety. These people have family and these people have needs, just like we do. They deserve every right as every other human does. I myself am a dual citizen of Mexico. I've traveled to Mexico several times and even lived there. These people are as people as people can be in their homeland and in the United States. Changing the location of home should have no effect on the treatment of a person. It is important to me and on the behalf of my people and friends that I have for Bellingham, that for Bellingham to become a sanctuary city and for my undocumented friends and family. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. James?
Hi, my name's James Douglas. I came to your last meeting and spoke on behalf of human rights in support of the sanctuary city proposal. I wanted to address a very specific part of why it's important to be a sanctuary city, and that is public safety. If we have a large segment of our community who feels at risk, as the undocumented immigrants do, it breaks down the kind of communication relationship that they can have with our local law enforcement. It makes them targets of crime. Who better to steal from, from somebody who's afraid to go to the police? Who better to assault or carry out some crime against than those that don't feel that they're safe talking to police for help? It also puts the rest of us at risk because who's willing, if you're an undocumented immigrant, how risky is it for you to step forward and say, I witnessed a crime that happened, or this person needed help and the police are coming? It puts us all, I think, in a public safety situation, which is really unnecessary. So I'd really hope that you would take the public safety aspect of this into account as you look at this. There's a number of cities throughout the United States who've taken a position that we have ICE, which does the enforcement in terms of immigration, and that that duty does not really fall on the shoulders of local police enforcement who were really here to try to protect and serve. And so it's unnecessary to jeopardize our local police officers', you know, mission to try to protect and serve us all in Bellingham in order to try to take care of something that really lies in a different jurisdiction. Also, when you look at the statistics as far, and you heard some of them as far as participating in the economy, but on the public safety aspect, you are so much safer around these excellent people that you heard talking tonight than you are around just about anybody else who lives in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, James. Anna Wolfe.
Hello, my name's Anna Wolfe and I'm here today. I've been a resident of Bellingham since 1999. I am also an immigrant and I am an instructor at Watcom Community College. And I'm here for two reasons. The first is actually to express my support as a longtime member of this community for the students who came here on November 14th and again today and asked for Bellingham to become a sanctuary city. These students and those they are speaking for are valued members of our community, and I believe we have an obligation to make them as safe as possible. I read the mayor's statement that the BPD is currently neutral in regards to immigration status, but I believe as a community, we need to make a stronger statement. I fully support these students' requests and I know a lot of other members of our community do too. And I call on the city council to make both a strong statement and to have strong policies of sanctuary for the undocumented members of our community. My second reason for being here is connected to the first. Many people in Bellingham are rightfully afraid in the wake of the election. We all know that incidents of intimidation and harassment have spiked throughout the country. They are happening here too. Time Magazine recently published an article clearly articulating that one of our most effective ways as a community that we can deal with this problem is to come together and create an environment in which all members of the community understand that inclusiveness and equity are central values. Basically, positive fear pressure works. Communities that take a strong stance against hate are less likely to experience hate incidents. In other words, we have to be proactive, not reactive. People in our community are already afraid, and incidents of intimidation and harassment are already happening. Just because they're not being officially reported doesn't mean that they're not there. And I believe as a community, we need to work harder to create an atmosphere of complete intolerance for acts of hate and hate speech. And we've got to do it now before it escalates. I know that there are many, many community organizations in Bellingham that are working on this, but you're our city council, you're our elected leaders, and I call on you to lead on this issue. What is the city of Bellingham doing to ensure that all residents are cared for and valued? There are a lot of resources out there, most notably through the Southern Poverty Law Center that offer us models of how we can do this and create a community in which hate speech and hate acts aren't tolerated. And I call upon the city council to follow these models and make Bellingham a place where we can proudly say, not in our town. And I firmly believe that becoming a sanctuary city is a key part of this effort. And I urge the city council to make Bellingham a sanctuary city with all possible speed. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. I have Elliott Glasser, Tara Hughes, and Ines Publlet.
Hello, my name is Elliott Glasser. I was born and raised in Bellingham, lived here pretty much all my life. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the city of Bellingham becoming a sanctuary city. I am also here tonight to object to certain comments that were made at the last city council meeting. As you are all aware, during the last public comment period, the idea of becoming a sanctuary city was proposed by a brave group of undocumented Western Washington University students. They're here tonight as well. This took courage and determination in the wake of an election that has left our country divided and afraid. And even before they were able to stand where I am now and voice their concerns to the city council, they were met with demeaning and dehumanizing comments from other members of this community. And to myself and others who watched that, it appeared that the Bellingham City Council was okay with that kind of language and treatment of our fellow community members, that the city council is complacent with the dehumanization of our fellow residents and members of this community, and that scares me. There's a tendency by everyone during this uncertain period in our country to pretend that everything is normal and just wait to see what happens. I, and I hope many of you, feel that this is not a safe reaction to the drastic changes looming over our country. Things are not normal, and we cannot afford to wait and see what happens because in four years' time, potentially eight, we could be living in a very different United States. And we must take a stand now and provide sanctuary to all who reside within our borders regardless of how they came into this country. We must come together and treat each other with the dignity and respect that we all deserve. We cannot watch dehumanization and acts of hatred that are already occurring within our community without taking action. On November 8th, I felt ashamed to be a citizen of this country, and I have felt that shame every day since. I do not wish to be ashamed to be a resident of this city. This is my home and I have always been proud of it. And I urge you to take action in making Bellingham a sanctuary city for all who choose to reside here. Thank you.
Tara Hughes?
Hi, my name is Tara Hughes. I've been living in Bellingham since 1992. I'm also an instructor at Watcom Community College, and I wanted to be here to support the students from Western, who, some of whom have been students, my students, at Watcom, excellent students. We obviously at the community college work with quite a few students, many of whom are undocumented. And I want to see our city give them an equal chance to have the support and safety that the rest of our residents do. I am very aware, following this election and incidents at Standing Rock, that our government is founded by undocumented immigrants. Unless we are fully Native American, all of our ancestors at some point were probably undocumented immigrants. And just because my ancestors came here 300 years ago doesn't make them any more worthy, or me any more worthy, to be a citizen of this country or resident of this city than people who came here as children 15, 20 years ago. So I can't, I don't think, say anything better than the people who have already spoken, but I want to strongly urge the city to consider making this a sanctuary city and providing the support for our immigrant young people and residents that the rest of us enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Ines, and then Katya Kraft, and Rachel Wright.
Hi, my name is Ines Publlet. I'm also an educator, excuse me, at Watcom Community College. I teach English as a second language. My students are international, speak various languages, are from all over the world. And I'm here to support undocumented peoples in Bellingham. I'm an immigrant to the US myself. I moved here from Buenos Aires, Argentina, when I was 10 years old. So I've spent more than half of my life here in the States. My family came here to seek opportunity and I was given access to wonderful opportunities here in the United States. And so I'm here to speak in support of giving those opportunities to others, continuing that process, continuing that support. I'm here to support our undocumented peoples at Western and at Watcom Community College and in our Bellingham community. I think that's what Bellingham stands for, and that I urge the city council to make Bellingham a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ines.
My name is Katya Kraft, and I'm also an educator at Watcom Community College. And I am here mostly to just say that I support a lot of the statements that have already been said in regards to creating a sanctuary city for Bellingham. For, if we think about it, from all of the arguments that have been made, from an economic productivity standpoint, from a civil rights issue, from a safety issue, I think all of those are very compelling arguments, and I think that the arguments that have been made have been well stated. Thank you.
Rachel Wright, then Christina Choi and Russell Pierce.
Hello, my name is Rachel Wright, and I'm an instructor at Bellingham Technical College. I am a lifelong Bellingham resident, and most of the time, I am grateful to call Bellingham home. I am speaking tonight to voice my support for making Bellingham a sanctuary for undocumented immigrants. At the last city council meeting, Mayor Linville said that people should not be afraid to live in the city of Bellingham. I encourage the council to stand by that statement and take action to protect undocumented community members from deportation and harassment from federal immigration officials. In response to some of the comments voiced in opposition at the last council meeting, this is not an issue of pursuing a cool liberal agenda or encouraging the city to break federal law. It is about standing up for the rights of all community members and actively resisting enforcement of federal immigration policies that are unconstitutional. There are those in Bellingham who see undocumented immigrants as a problem and are perhaps afraid to see their community change. I'm speaking tonight to let the council know there is a movement within Bellingham to stand up for the rights of undocumented immigrants. There is a movement within Bellingham that will not stand by silently as local law enforcement officials help ICE detain friends, coworkers, classmates, and neighbors. I encourage the Bellingham City Council to not only take a stance on this issue, but to take immediate action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rachel. Christina?
Hello, my name is Christina Choi, and I am also here to speak in support of Bellingham becoming a sanctuary city for really two reasons. As a higher education professional myself, I've been working within the field of higher education for about seven years now, and I currently work at Watcom Community College in the advising department. I look and see the hope and the wealth of knowledge that all of my students bring, no matter their immigration status, no matter the color of their skin, no matter their socioeconomic status, and I only grow so much more from that. And how much more can they bring to our city, which is already a city that I think, after having moved here four years ago, is a wonderful city full of diverse thoughts and diverse people. And so for my own professional pedagogy, it would behoove me to be up here today to speak on behalf of my students, many of my students who cannot speak on behalf of themselves. And for the second reason, again, like I said, I moved to Bellingham four years ago, and it wasn't until November 8th where I had to really consider my own safety as a woman of color in Bellingham. Since November 8th, I have been faced myself with intimidation. I no longer feel safe to be in the city alone, and that's a problem. And part of Bellingham becoming a sanctuary city means it's safety for everyone. And I really take in role model after these students, actually, to be up here today, to speak out against the intimidation that I have also faced as a person of this community, as a product of two immigrants who came to this country looking for opportunities to give to my brother and to myself. And so I urge you to take not only an immediate stance, but an active one. I have loved living in Bellingham and will continue to love living in Bellingham as it has given me so many opportunities and so many new experiences. And I will continue to count the days until I know I'm safe again and until I know I can walk around this city on my own again. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christina. Russell?
My name is Russell Pierce. I am an educator at Watcom Community College, and I am simply here to be a voice advocating for making Bellingham a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. I have Sarah Perrington, Alyssa De La Fuente, and Daryl Lambert.
Hi, my name is Sarah Perrington, and I've lived in Bellingham for about six years now. I'm a graduate of Western Washington University and an employee at Watcom Community College. And I'm here to speak in support of Bellingham becoming a sanctuary city. And I'm pretty nervous, actually, to be here right now, but in the light of the changes that we've seen in this country, I know that I can no longer be silent and no longer sit aside. And I hope that I can be a voice for the students that I work with at Watcom, and I urge the council to listen to the voices that they've heard tonight and support what we've heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Alyssa?
Yeah, my name's Alyssa De La Fuente, and I also work at Watcom Community College. And I think that it's very important for our leaders to take a stand for the people that are living in this community. And I think that there are a lot of people that are living in this community that need that sanctuary city, right? They need that protection. And I have family members. I'm from Mount Vernon. I grew up in Mount Vernon, so did my parents. And it's, we still have family members that are undocumented, so I think it's really important to recognize that you can't tell, you don't know the stories of the people who are going to be affected by this. And it's a huge, it will be a huge change, and it will be devastating if we don't become a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Daryl Lambert, Hal Wershur, and Galen Hurst? Daryl Lambert, Hal Wershaw, and Galen Hurst?
Hello, I'm Hal Wershaw. That last name is somewhat unusual. There are four Wershaws in the United States of America. The rest, my ancestors were wiped out in the concentration camps in Germany, maybe Poland. With that in mind, I'd like to read a quotation, which is, kind of sums up why I'm here today. This is from a German pastor who also was taken into the concentration camps. First they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. Thank you. I'm obviously in support of the sanctuary city.
Thank you, Hal. I did miss a name here. Daryl Lambert, was Daryl here? Thank you. Daryl? No? Okay. Galen? And Kelly Krieger, maybe?
Hi there, my name is Galen Hurst. I'm the Western Washington University Associated Students Local Issues Coordinator, and I just urge the council to listen to all the excellent speakers before me and make Bellingham a sanctuary city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Galen. Kelly?
Hi, I'm Kelly Krieger. I've lived here since 2006. I just wrote a little speech here, so.
That's okay. And you can put the microphone up a little higher to you, Kelly, if you'd like. There you go.
How's that? I'm here this evening to urge you to make a decision that we can all be proud of and that supports our valued undocumented population and sends a positive and inclusive message to families and children living in our community. I believe that this decision reflects who we are as a community. I was appalled by the comments I heard arising from the last council meeting. That's why I'm here tonight. They do not reflect my views. I am not an undocumented citizen, but I want to speak out for the ones living in our community. Thank you. I'm in support.
Thank you, Kelly. Is there anyone who didn't have an opportunity to sign up? Please come, if you could, and just state your name for the record.
My name is Vicky Shway. I have been a resident in Bellingham for more than 10 years, almost 15 years, actually. I teach at Western Washington University, and I also support making Bellingham a sanctuary city. A letter was written at our university in support of the Blue Group and for the call to make Western Washington University a sanctuary city. And literally within a week, more than 350 people signed that letter, faculty, staff, and alumni, and alumna. These are people from across the university, in the sciences, in biology, in chemistry, in physics, environmental studies, education, the arts. I think their signatures testify to the fact that this is a human rights issue. I think from a very practical standpoint, Bellingham should become a sanctuary city like San Francisco and Seattle, New York, Chicago, because it's practical to do so. Police officers, law enforcement recognize that becoming a sanctuary city, maintaining sanctuary status improves the safety and well-being of the community, particularly those, as so many of the speakers have said, who are the most vulnerable, the ones who are the most prone to not having the law at their disposal for their protection. We really need to take a leading stance on this issue. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that there is a way in which the call for sanctuary has really revealed how much scare tactics, fear mongering, and falsehoods have been able to permeate the political discourse. For Bellingham to become a sanctuary city is to affirm the values and the practices it already has. I think it's really important not to be governed by fear and intimidation about what we are going to do as a community to protect and affirm the people who are already here, who are productive and incredibly contributive members of our society. For Bellingham to make a decision not to become a sanctuary city simply because of threats would be to betray the values that we hold so dear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come on up and just state your name. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nikki Mantas. I worked at Watcom Community College for several years and at Bellingham Technical College, teaching English as a second language. And I think by my calculations, I must have had 1,500 students from Watcom County who are immigrants. And the only reason I came up now, I figured, we've pretty much covered it here. But I'm not here to talk about the value of immigrants in our community, which is immeasurable. I'm here to just reiterate that the safety factor is something that really concerns me. I have seen students of mine whose families were shattered by a simple traffic stop for a light that's not functioning, where a parent was sent away with their infant child in the car, leaving behind teenage children who were born here, who had nowhere to turn. So I've seen how this issue can be devastating. I've seen students of mine in the past who could not report crimes, who've spoken to me saying, what do I do? I've noticed this happening, there's domestic violence happening in my community, there are other issues, and I'm afraid to call because every time I call the police, they come with the Border Patrol. And that, if that isn't the most intimidating way to bring a translator, I really don't know how to address it. We live so close to the border that that added element of intimidation has been with our community all along. And so making Bellingham a sanctuary city sends a strong statement that our funds will remain here to protect our citizens and not to enforce intimidating policies which are coming. And I believe that they're coming. So I think it's essential right now that we send a message that our citizens, our residents, our community members are safe. Because again, it's difficult to say who we're talking about. I have been approached in the past and profiled. I've been followed around grocery stores in Watcom County for speaking Spanish, greeting a student in the store on my way to a county class. So I do know what this intimidation feels like. And I just, that's all I have to say. Again, in favor of being a sanctuary city.
Thank you, Nikki.
Good evening. I'm Maria Timmons Flores, and I'm a Bellingham resident. I'm also a faculty member at Western Washington University. I'm here tonight to support our students, who many of them have had to work harder and overcome more barriers to achieve the things they have. And also, many of them have really deep commitments to their community. They're doing the work at Western and other Watcom, other places, because they have a deep desire to give something back to their community and their families. I'm also here because I work in the area of ELL and bilingual education. So I'm here also speaking for many of the families that are in our communities. We don't know the statistics, we don't know how many community members we have who are undocumented, but Pew Hispanic Trust tells it that 8% of all children in this country have at least one parent who's undocumented. Imagine that, that's almost 1 in 10 children who go to school every morning wondering if their parent is going to be there when they get home at night. And that's true before the election that we just experienced. The intimidation and the threat and the fear and the trauma that causes, wondering if your family is going to be able to stay together is really, I would hope that none of us would ever wish that upon the children of this country. I also, my husband is an immigrant from Mexico. He is documented and has been for a great deal of time. But even in Bellingham, walking through the ferry terminal where there always are two Border Patrol vehicles there, and walking through downtown, wondering if he too is going to be stopped without his papers on him at any moment in time, it's created an internalized sense of fear in a community that used to be very, very welcoming. Bellingham, I think, historically has stood up for its community members, and I really encourage this council to do that same. I definitely stand in favor of a sanctuary status.
Thank you, Maria.
My name is Kelly Morgan, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Sanctuary City Movement. I teach the other end of the spectrum. I'm a first grade teacher at Birchwood Elementary. We have a very diverse population, and I wouldn't want it any other way than to look out at my class and see the beautiful faces that I see every day and across our school. I do know that even at the kindergarten, first through fifth grade level, the fear has been elevated at the school. Kids are talking about it, kids have been tearful, they're trying to process it. We had conferences shortly after the election, parents told us that they were fearful, even if they do have documentation, because you can't tell if a person's documented just by looking at them. So they're afraid for family members, for neighbors, for friends, and for intimidation for themselves. The district held, well, supported a meeting at Schuylkill the Thursday after the election. 300 people came to hear what their legal rights were. And the meeting was called at 10 o'clock that Thursday morning. I worry for students that are in fear of not staying in our educational system, that they won't reach their potential, because it's hard to set goals and look to the future when you don't know what your future holds. It's hard for a middle schooler to sit in class and say, I'm going to work really hard at this, but it might end tomorrow. You know, something might come in the way of me meeting my potential. And then finally, I have seen the sadness that happens when family members have to be separated. I have been the adoptive mom of kids who have been separated from their mom and dad for a year at a time. And it's painful, and during that time, again, the students aren't meeting their potential. So I don't want that for the students in our community. I want every student in Bellingham Public Schools to have everything they can have in place to be successful and to reach their dreams, find their passion, and be fantastic citizens like these community college members. So I'm just here to support the other end of the spectrum and let you know the little kids are worried too, and they are voiceless. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Charlie?
Good evening, I'm Charles Law, and I just want to say I support a sanctuary that is also spiritual and also corporal. Thank you.
First, thank you to the Lumination for allowing me to be here tonight and speak. So Roxanne, my hands are raised to you. Also, thank you, council members, as a voting member of Bellingham, thank you for allowing me to speak. And thank you to the Blue Group, always. I was asked to speak once before for Bellingham at the Martin Luther King Celebration, and I stood out here on the steps, and I urged Bellingham community members to be extremists for love. So I'm urging the city council to listen to that message and be extremists for love and honor our students this evening and all undocumented community members of Bellingham and their families. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who did not have a chance to speak that would like to speak at public comment? Anyone? Going once, twice? So I know it's really confusing and difficult sometimes to go through the public comment process because the council does not respond. And that is, part of our process is just to allow people to speak at public comment. It does not mean that we agree with the words that are spoken or that it reflects who we are. And in order for us to govern, we have to listen to everybody's comments, whether we agree with them or not. But it is people's democratic right, and we must uphold. So I know it's difficult, I understand that. Believe me, if I could stop public comment, throughout this year, I've had many things said to me this year. I know exactly what intimidation feels like. So I can tell you that we know it's uncomfortable, and unfortunately, culture and society asks us to bear witness to all sides. I too am an immigrant, and I assure you that everyone here very much cares about the lives of the people in our community. And then one other thing for public comment, so we have someone who comes in all the time. I have no way to get ahold of him. I expected Chris Diley to be here this evening. So if you are watching somewhere, I hope you're in a warm environment, but we have put together a document for you to explain all of the funding that we do for homeless communities. So Chris, next time you're here, we have something for you, or you can come to the council, and we'll provide that for you. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. We are going to move into our regular meeting now, and we are going to review our committee meetings. Officer Almer, I guess you're probably good to go, so thank you for being here, but no questions on the downtown beat. There was supposed to be, so he was here to answer public comment. All right, we'll just give everyone a moment to... What? Nobody wants to stay for the exciting processes? It's fun, really.
You don't want to help us approve our budget?
No, nobody, nobody wants to make comments on the budget. Okay, we're going to convene with our committee meeting review from this afternoon. Our first committee is Public Works Public Safety, and Teri Bornamann is the chair.
Well, before we get started, I'd ask this afternoon that we be able to have a moment of silence in memory of Joe Yaver. For many people, most people up here have known Joe as a longtime community member who has been very, very active in this community. He was very active in the organization SPIE, and so many people in this community that have worked with or for Joe over the years. And there's been many council people up here who have sat and listened to Joe at different times, talk about preserving the values of Bellingham, preserving their parklands, preserving their quality of life. And Joe has been incredibly active in this community. He was a friend, I'm going to miss, I think we all will, his smile, because he was one of the real gentlemen in this community when he addressed the council and addressed issues. He was always courteous, but always right to the point. So I would like if we could just take a moment of silence in memory of Joe. I'm going to miss that man, he was quite a gentleman. We had two items, though, before our committee, so let's get on with that. The first was a proposed ordinance accepting donation of easement for operation and maintenance of Baker Creek Estates Stormwater Facility. The Baker Creek Estates Stormwater Facility is a privately owned stormwater facility in the city of Bellingham. The Homeowners Association has offered to donate an easement to the city of Bellingham to provide access for operation and maintenance of the facility. This would ensure consistent, proper operation and maintenance of the facility. The staff recommended that the council accept the donation of the easement by adopting the attached proposed ordinance as authorized by Chapter 4.90 of the Bellingham Municipal Code. The committee recommends approval and I so...
Second. Okay, we have a motion in front of us. All those in favor of... All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
The second item was a bid award for the Bellingham Central Library Reroute Project, bid 70... bid 71B-2016. The Bellingham Central Library Re Roof Project involves demolition and replacement or modification of existing membrane roofing and ballast, skylights, flashing coping, expansion joints, walking surfaces, mechanical ductwork and supports, brick pointing, and miscellaneous items on the roof of the Bellingham Central Library located at 210 Central Avenue. The city received three bids, which were publicly opened on November 17, 2016. High Tech Roofing, Inc. was the responsible bidder who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $250,387.18 base bid, plus $192,424 accepting bid alternate for, for a project total of $442,811.19, including Washington State sales or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $387,429 for the base bid. The committee recommended approval and awarding this bid to High Tech Roofing, and I so move.
Second. Discussion? Okay. We have a motion in front of us to accept the bid award for the Bellingham Central Library Re Roof Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
End of committee reports.
Thank you, Terry. Our next committee is Finance and Personnel, and Roxanne Murphy is the chair.
Good evening, everyone. The Finance and Personnel Committee had one agenda item. It's an ordinance amending the 2015-2016 adopted budget, reducing revenue by $295,000 in the general fund to account for business and occupation tax refunds. This is money that we owe back to organizations that are due this tax refund, and the committee recommended unanimous approval, and I so move.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to accept the adopted budget with the reduced funding from the BNO tax. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. End of committee. Thank you. And Parks and Recreation, and Michael Illicus is the chair.
Thanks, Pinky. Parks and Rec had one item for us today. It was a possible bid award for the Central Pier Infill Project. Central Avenue Pier is the pedestrian gateway to the waterfront district development. This pier is actually a park promenade, which will provide a connection to the new Welcome Waterway Park, and park development will be completed in multiple phases. This initial phase includes the infrastructure to widen the existing pier and provide pedestrian access to the granary building. So the widening is happening towards the building, not in, over the water. This project does, however, incorporate some in-water work, which must be completed during the winter work window, and includes removal of wood pilings, new paddle driving, and shoreline habitat improvement. The city received three bids, of which the lowest responsive and responsible bidder was Raz Construction of Bellingham, in the amount of $277,225 plus applicable sales tax. That was below the engineer's estimate for this work. This afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended approval of this bid, and I so move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Any discussion? Accept the bid approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
End of committee.
Okay, thank you, Michael. And we're going to move on to our committee of the whole. We had six items in front of us today. We had a few presentations. The first one was by Puget Sound Energy. They gave us two updates, one on emergency preparedness and the, I encourage everybody to watch the afternoon committee meeting, but one of the most important things I got out of there is that PSC has an outage app for people to put on their mobile device, so you can see if your home is out of power or your business, and you can report outages from there, and you can also, to encourage people to call if they do have an outage, because they don't know of every single one. So that is very helpful in everyone getting back online and getting their power up. And then also, they discussed some of the energy efficiency initiatives they've had here in the city of Bellingham with the Bellingham Energy Prize, one of them being the Green Power Challenge, which the city of Bellingham, and that's the citizens who made this happen, meet the stretch goal for the green power, and the city has been, was awarded today $50,000 to put a solar installation in the city. So that is thanks to all the citizens and customers of Puget Sound Energy for making that happen. The second presentation was an update on the 2016 Bellingham Energy Prize. We had a presentation from Mark Gardner, who works for city council here, and Mike Anderson, who works for Bellingham Public Schools. They gave us a very good overview of all the energy efficiency initiatives that have been happening, all the partners through the prize, and acknowledged all the work that has been happening through our community. And the school has really done a tremendous job in energy efficiency this year. They've touched every single school in some way or another in regards to energy efficiency, and they have been doing a lot of work with their students. So it's great to know that all the youngins who are coming behind us will have that as a priority later in life. So thank you to them, and we are still, we believe, around fourth place in the Bellingham Energy Prize. Prize ends in December 31, 2016. We've got three weeks left. If anybody still wants to sign on, that's bellinghamenergyprize.org. And then our third presentation was, we had a discussion on enforcement for illegal residential units. And actually, I should ask Rick Sepler, is there anything that you wanted to specifically identify in this? If not, I can just read off some of the information that you gave this afternoon, and you can chime in if you want to.
If you'd like to just summarize.
Okay, sure. That would be great.
This is an ongoing process. It was an update that Updates Council, we were last here in September, talking about the various programs that are under development or being implemented to address more focused efforts on that. We've provided update and next steps, characterized by both staffing as well as policy, and we anticipate coming back. Again, we just met with Western Washington on Friday, the executive vice, the senior vice president and vice president for community relations to work on Towngown. We expect to be back in front of this body in the first quarter with the Towngown program and the implementing ordinances for consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. One other thing that Rick did mention this afternoon, which I wanted to say, is that we do have an enforcement officer who will be starting in January, who's, and in partnership with a planner, whose responsibility will be to tackle enforcement, whose, one of their responsibilities will be to, to support the enforcement. So just know that we are, we are trying to address that. We know it is a community concern, and we are trying to put everything in place as soon as we can to, to help out in our communities. Okay, and then the fourth item was an ordinance for the city of Bellingham regarding Planning Commission membership, amending Section 2.42-0, sorry, .020 of the Bellingham Municipal Code. And this was consideration of an ordinance of the city of Bellingham regarding Planning Commission membership, amending the BMC regarding the makeup of planning commission members, so no more than free voting members of the commission may engage principally in the buying, selling, developing, construction of, or investment in real estate for profit. So we actually had a very robust discussion about this today, and we made several amendments in order for this to, to pass or to get through to a point where we were ready to, to vote on it. And I encourage anyone to watch the afternoon committee meeting, if you're wondering how we got to this place. I was wondering whether I should read out all these amendments. Maybe I should, just for people to see. Okay. Oh, maybe, maybe we could ask Peter Raffado. Okay.
So Peter Raffado, Legal Department. So I'll just read out the amendments that were made to what you see in the packet in committee. So starting with Section 1, letter D, second sentence, we'll read, "This paragraph also applies to professionals, consultants, and advisors for whom a majority of clients and customers engage principally in the buying, selling, developing, construction of, or investment in real estate for profit." And then the next sentence, in the same, under, in D, the third sentence, the word "construction" will be inserted before "contractors." And then in Section F, the first sentence will read, "The desired composition and limitations regarding membership set forth in subsections C, D, and E above are for the purpose of the mayor appointing and city council confirming members." And Section 2, the language that was there is deleted in its entirety and will be replaced by the language, "This ordinance shall become effective on April 1, 2017."
Okay, thank you, Peter. So we have a draft ordinance that is in front of us, which is, has our revisions from this And this was unanimously recommended by the committee this afternoon, and I so move. Second. Okay, so all those in favor of passing the ordinance, amending Section 2.42-020 of the Bellingham Municipal Code, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And also, I just wanted to reiterate something that came from this afternoon, is that I have great respect and admiration for all the people who have volunteered their time to be on the Planning Commission. I think everyone who is on there right now has done an outstanding job, and I want to commend them and thank them for, for their work on the Planning Commission. Our next item was the discussion on the adoption of the Bellingham flag. We had three options in front of us this afternoon. We discussed drafting a resolution for the adopt, adoption of the unofficial city flag, or drafting a flag ordinance that would adopt the city flag, or creating a formal competitive contest to choose a design. Our, after much discussion and deliberation, we went with Plan 1, drafting a resolution to the adoption of an unofficial flag. So what we did this afternoon is we had a motion to direct staff to compose a draft resolution designating Bradley Lockhart's flag as the unofficial flag of Bellingham, with the caveat that the council will ensure that the designer has permission from the tribes in order for us to say that this is a sanctioned unofficial flag. So that was the motion that was in front of us today, and I believe that's the only action we need to take until the resolution is in front of us. Okay? Thank you for, everyone, for that. And then we went to the very exciting topic of the day, the adoption of the city of Bellingham's 2017-2018 budget. And we had a little bit of discussion around that. And just for anybody's reference, in our official packet, page 32 and page 33 outlines all of the changes or anything that was added or changed through our budget for 2017-2018. And the committee unanimously recommended approval, and I so move. Second.
My goodness. Everybody's on the ball today.
Any additional discussion on that? Okay, so I have a motion in front of us to adopt the 2017-2018 budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Okay, we have two sets of minutes for us to approve this evening. Both of them are for city council meetings. The first one is for November 7. Move approval. Second. All right, we have a motion to approve the November 7 committee meeting, oh, sorry, council meetings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Oh, okay, yeah, all right. Just checking out. Is it a body language, or, okay, I'm just picking up on over there. Yes. Second meeting minutes we have is for November 14, 2016. Move approval. Second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Older New Business. Councilmember Parker.
Let's see. So this week, Marie Marshon, our LA, and I attended the Dispute Resolution Center, had equity and cultural humility training. So they're going to be offering that four times in the coming year. So I know we had a lot of talk about acceptance today, and if people would like to, they can reach out to the Dispute Resolution Center and also participate in that training.
Anyone else? Older New Business? No? Okay. The mayor's report.
Thank you, Pinky. First, I'd like to congratulate WWU Soccer Team for winning a national championship. We don't really talk sports in here that much, but we do talk university, so I thought I'd give them the plug they deserve for having such an excellent team. Secondly, we did have a lot of conversations today about EMS and the budget, and the first step that we talked about doing was obviously looking to renegotiate the inter locales, so we'd know where we, exactly where we stood. And we do have an internal transition team devised or put together so that we can start that work. So that was already in the works, and I don't think that I mentioned that this afternoon, or, or nobody mentioned it this afternoon, so. Third thing, we did hire, or the Board of Trustees hired a new interim library director, Nancy Kerr, and she's going to start on January 4. She and Pam will overlap for two days, so they'll be here together. The $40,000 that I put in my budget two years ago to do the feasibility study on the library, I have been meeting with Pam and Jay Gordon, who's the president of the library board, and we are going to start that feasibility study in '17. We will talk to the council about some of their interests and provide a recommendation to you, and that's open for discussion. And we're going to be coordinating this with the Board of Trustees, which I think is really important, so that we're all on the same page when we spend the money to do this feasibility study. Finally, I didn't see any of you there. You may have been under an umbrella, but we did light the Christmas, I mean, the holiday tree, sorry, holiday tree, on Sunday, and I'll tell you, it was not a, not a nice night. But there were a lot of people there, and they all stood inside Depot Square, Depot Market Square, so that was nice. And we had children dancing and people singing, and, you know, it was, it was a very nice event, though abbreviated from what we have done in the past. With that, I have two appointments to the Transportation Commission for you to approve. The first is Kate Darby.
Move approval.
And the second is Cory Blackwood.
Do we need to vote on the first one? I think, okay.
Oh, I thought, oh, move approval?
Yeah.
You didn't vote, but I heard you move it, so I was happy.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Okay, so, that was for Kate, was the first one?
Yeah, Kate Darby, she's a professor at Western.
Okay, we will, first, we'll vote on Kate. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Kate's approved.
And then the second is Cory Blackwood, who is an employee and bike rider, call a bicycle.
Move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Parker. So I attended this Transportation Commission meeting, and I know Cory, and I think he'll do a fabulous job, but I, I did notice, I think the current commission is all males, so it's nice to have Kate joining. There was also another female that I know would have been great at the position, but I don't know if she, she also had mentioned she might have many other things. So I was just interested in, was this from the Transportation Commission that they were suggesting? This was yours?
No, they, they suggested, they had three people they interviewed, two women and Cory. And so Jim McCabe, Ted, Eric, and I interviewed them. So we used the same procedure we use when we talk, or when we interview planning commissioners. And Cory and Kate really shone, so.
I appreciate you. I appreciate you.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us to approve Cory on the board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
We did tell the other candidate that, that we were going to have openings later on and that, you know, we would keep her, her application in mind.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
So fast. We have a motion in front of us and a second to, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 21435, ordinance, an ordinance amending the 2015-2016 adopted budget, transferring $10,703.05 from the Low Income Housing Fund to the Community Development Block Grant.
Move third and final.
Second.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
Aye.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Jean Knudsen?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening. This is our second to last meeting of 2016 and our last meeting will be next Monday, December 12. Until next time, we are adjourned.